Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. Thank you for joining us on this beautiful and warm Tuesday afternoon. It is Tuesday, May 10th. It is 4:30 PM. Now I'll go ahead and call our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. I want to thank all of our board colleagues for joining us and staff, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, and any guests that we have present either in person or joining us online. Thank you for being here with us today. As we do at every board meeting, before we continue with our agenda, I will read our board norms and protocols. The Board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon and welcome to everyone who's here joining us, either in person or virtually. With that, Ms. Smith, please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And before we approve the regular agenda, I actually have a few requests, so I would actually ask the Board and entertain a motion to amend today's agenda to include a few items, so follow along with me here. Under 3C, the consent agenda would amend to add the Kansas Public Library HR report formally, and add, under 5C, the Foundation Scholarships Report from Ms. Watson. I would also amend the agenda to add an executive session before we, after the Board Commentary and Communications under Agenda Item 2, an executive session for personnel. And the fourth amended agenda, and this was just an oversight from us, and we apologize, there was a community comment that had been requested and wasn't on the agenda when it was first published, but we do want to allow Jocelyn Strickland-Egans to give her comment today, so that would be Item 6B on the agenda. So would entertain a motion to-
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Ms. Page.
I would like for us to add another agenda item, a COVID-19 update, please.
And it under Board Discussion.
Okay. So we would add a COVID-19-
Add it before the, I mean, before the budget, so it could become the new B, if that works, I don't know.
Under-
Or it's up to you.
Trying to find, so we would add a COVID update to the agenda. I'm just trying to find exactly where we'll put it. Under Board Discussion, Item Number 11, we'll add, make that Item B, as in boy, and move the budget to Item C. So I hope we were able to track those amendments to the agenda. So would move to amend the agenda with those suggested items.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Motion carries. Now would entertain a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our communications from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, well, afternoon, everyone. I just have a few quick announcements. First, replay and learn program, KC KPS is proud to partner with the Kansas Public Library, Lakeshore Learning and Scholastics for Laundry Care Foundation and Leah's Laundromat on the Q. To launch this new initiative to create a safe, fun, and engaging space for children and families to read in laundromats, the learning space will be equipped with a variety of books in different languages to encourage and engage children to read at an early age. We're looking forward to our ribbon-cutting ceremony or event on Tuesday, May 17th, at 10 o'clock AM at Leah's Laundromat located at 1920 Quandero Boulevard. I just want to take this time to, again, to say, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we also had principals appreciation or recognition as well, so I just wanted to take this time to echo what Dr. Campbell said in her message on Friday. We want all of our teachers and instructional staff to know that we are truly grateful for the important role you play in molding the lives of our students and helping them become the best person they can be. So thank you to all of our teachers, our instructional staff, and our administrators for all they do. It is National Nurses Week, and we also want to give a shout out to all of our nurses to recognize National Nurses Week. Just like a Band-Aid, school nurses make everything better. This week, we're celebrating National Nurses Week, and thank you to all the nurses in KC KPS. Speaking of nurses, we are looking for nurses for our summer school program, so if you are a nurse and you are available during the month of June, we do have Sunday, summer school Monday through Thursday, and we're looking for nurses to join us. We do have an attendance bonus that's available, so please contact our HR department for more information. And finally, I want to say, I am not faster than 201 fifth graders. I participated, I was faster than about 199. I participated in the annual Are You Faster Than a Fifth Grader event on Friday, and I must tell you, the group of fifth graders were very competitive and fast. From when I walked into the fieldhouse, they talked a lot of stuff, and 201 of them backed it up. So I want to thank Ms. Christine, principals, teachers, and everyone for the hard work you put into organizing this event this year, after three years of a hiatus due to COVID-19. Lastly, I want to congratulate all the fifth graders who participated by either running or walking the two-mile course to Eisenhower. Also, thanks to KC KPS Police, the Kansas Public Department, KCK Community College and Police Department, and the Unified Government for ensuring we were all safe and by maintaining traffic and blocking the streets, and thanks to all the staff and volunteers and parents and board members and community members that came out to support. I will do a better job training next year. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Stubblefield, and to all those fifth graders that ran alongside you. Just a few announcements on my end. Again, I just also want to say thank you to all of our teachers and staff, and especially as we're closing out the school year, just, you know, continue to push strong, and we're so proud of all of you, and we're so grateful for each of you. To our students and families, you've got this. Keep working hard, finish out the year strong, and we're proud of you as well. For our seniors, we can't wait to see you walk across the stage, so looking forward to all of your graduations as well. So thank you to all of our staff, our students, and all of our families for the work that you're putting into as we head into the end of the school, academic school year. And then the last thing, I'll just quickly share. Board, you'll be getting an email from me looking for some dates in June to continue our self-evaluation and an additional board retreat to work through some of our work, our board norms, and some of the additional items that we've talked through. So you'll be getting a few suggested dates to see if you are available, be on the lookout for those. The sooner you can reply to Ms. Smith, once you get that email, the quicker we can lock in those dates and make sure that it's on everyone's calendar, so be on the lookout for that. Thank you. And with that, I will open it up. Ms. Drew.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned about faster than a fifth grader, I did not run, because I'm not faster than a fifth grader, but I was there as they arrived at Eisenhower Middle School to greet them and say hello. And then afterwards, I drove over, but I noticed that the music was very good trying to get them engaged, and even though I wasn't down on the track field, I was up above, and I was doing my own dancing to let them know that I was supporting, but I think it was a very good event, whereas everybody that was there had a good time. On Thursday, I went to Sumner Academy as they gave the award to Ms. Jamil Brown, and it was, I felt very honored to be there as she received this special award. And then this morning, I was at the Kansas Early Childhood Center to observe and watch some of the students as they were helping them to be able to learn, and they were so engaging with me that as they were in a kitchen area with food, they were serving me with plastic food so that I could be engaged, and I'm going to continue to stop in and just visit every now and then, but it's very good to be able to do that as a former teacher. And then I'd like to say congratulations, as we did celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, because it's always good to let teachers know how well they are doing, and just want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Other, Ms. Russell.
Good evening. I would just echo Ms. Drew's thoughts, but I just have a few more to add. I also just wanted to say thank you to the community partners, parents, staff, and administrators who spent last week loving up on our teachers and staff. I saw on social media lots of goodies, lots of fun themes, and so I truly hope that our staff and our teachers felt appreciated throughout the week. I also want to shout out to the IARC team as they've had a busy week with Are You Faster Than a Fifth Grader, and then this week, they are hosting Kansas Kids Fitness Day with third graders. This morning, I got to get out to Schlegel and see all of the fun that the kids were having, so they have a busy week, and they are enduring the heat outdoors with our students in true fun fashion. And then lastly, I just wanted to shout out the students at Wyandotte High School who hosted a youth homeless summit, bringing awareness to hunger and homeless that impacts their peers in our local community, which has only been exasperated by the pandemic. So kudos to all of you for your great work and all those that participated and organized the event.
Thank you. Other commentary? Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I'm sure Ms. Clark noted this, both were present, but it was enjoyable to help judge the eighth-grade projects, research projects at Eisenhower, and actually, those top ideas, research projects, we really seriously need to consider, because they are, they're on target and they're doable. So a couple of them are no brainers, so I hope that we can, one, consider the fact that they researched, two, that they judged and they were the top winners, and three, we budget for those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Ms. Clark?
Yep, I'll just share, myself and these, and Ms. Drew and Ms. Humphries, we were all able to attend Washington High School for ROTC. It was a huge awards, award assembly on a Friday night, and our parents really came out and supported our students, and our community members did as well, so it was really nice to be able to be there. The staff was very welcoming as well, and so Dr. Stubblefield was there with us, so it was just a good time. Actually, one of our students actually, I'm going to use the wrong name, he was, he joined, he joined the military, and I can't remember which one. You see, I've lost my train of thought there. The Air Force. He was sworn into the Air Force. Thank you. I lost my train of thought as I was going through that. I just, I know that he was sworn in, and so just wanted to call that out and appreciate our staff for being there and doing that as well. I'm a military mom, so there was, I have a soft spot there.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Other comments? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you all for sharing and for continuing to be present. We appreciate that. So we'll continue on with our agenda. Next on our agenda, would entertain a motion to recess to executive session for 10 minutes, for 10 minutes, to discuss matters of non-elected personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any questions? I'm sorry, I'm going to amend, I'm going to ask you to amend your motion, going in at 4:48, coming out at 4:58.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.[1186.58]
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to shuffle our agenda just a bit because we have some really great guests with us today. So we want to make sure that we don't keep them waiting. So I'm gonna, we're gonna jump to Agenda Item Number Five under Awards and Recognition and get to that Agenda Item. So first on the Agenda is our recognition of District Music Students earning State Honors. So I would ask Ms. Jody Lynn, if she is here, to please come forward.
My name is Sarai and I'm a senior at Sumner Academy. I am a part of the Bella Boce, which is the treble chorus of all women's. And I'm also a part of the Unità di Boce, where we got straight ones at State. And, um, yes, and I'm also made it to the All-State Honor Choir in Wichita.
Hi, my name is Rachel Aguilara. I'm part of the Corral Group, which is the mixed chorus at Sumner Academy. I was also a part of the Unità del Boce, which, of course, we got straight ones. And I was also selected to be a part of the State Honor Choir in Wichita as well.
Hello, my name is Carla Maraz and I'm a senior at Sumner Academy. And I am a member of Corral and Bella Boce and the president of both of those choirs. And I was also a part of the Unità del Boce. I got ones on my solo at State and I also participated in the State Honor Choir in Wichita.
Hello, my name is Kazwin Tochres. I'm a senior as well at Sumner Academy. I'm in the Corral and the Unità del Boce, in which we got straight ones at our State Large Group. And I also have been selected for Kansas All-State Choir in Wichita for the last three years.
Hi, my name is Jacob Swett. I'm the choir teacher at Central Middle. Unfortunately, my student that made it to the All-State Middle Level Choir was not able to make it here today. His name is Angel Gonzalez-Lopez. He's a tenor. He auditioned to make it into that group, but it was an All-State Choir of all middle school singers in the state. Thanks so much.
Hi, I am the director of the Wyandotte Symphonic Orchestra. And this year, and we haven't had one in a really long time, but we got a First Division rating for our State Large Group. Definitely going with the rebound, reimagine, and renew. We have renewed our faith in ourselves and the confidence that we needed to continue on.
Hey, my name is Rashid from Wyandotte High School, Sumner. I got a one in cello.
Hello, let me lift this up. I'm Mr. Kevin Relifer. I'm director of bands at Wyandotte High School. And I am here introducing three band students that all received a one at the State Solo Festival this year. So I'll let the first student come up.
Hello, my name is Cavante Fletcher. I am a part of the Wyandotte Bulldog Band. I performed my solo at Regionals and got a one. I also performed at State and got a one on the Euphonium.
Hi there, my name is Hedy Sandoval. I'm a senior at Wyandotte High School. I'm part of the Wyandotte Bulldog Marching Band and I performed both that Regional and Staying Up one of times.
Hello, my name is Sergio Perez Miranda. I'm a freshman at Wyandotte High School. I'm part of the marching band. I got a one for Regionals and a one for State.
Hello, everyone. I'm Justin Ramirez-Rice. I play cello and I'm from Sumner Academy. I played a solo and I made it to State, got a one at State. And I was part of this phonic chamber, which also got a one at State.
Either I'm really short or this podium is really tall. Hi, my name is Guadalupe and I was part of the Symphonic Orchestra and the Symphonic Chamber Orchestra, which both received a one rating at State.
Hello, I'm London. I play violin and I'm a part of the Symphonic Orchestra and Symphonic Chamber. And they both received a one.
Hello, everybody. I'm Yashin Kerr. I'm a senior at Sumner Academy and I'm a first violinist. And I'm a part of the Symphonic Large Group and Chamber. And we both received a one at State.
Hi, I'm back. Again, my name is Rachel Aguilara. This is Justin.
Hi again.
We were a part of a trio. Our third member, Carrie May Mendoza, is not here with us today. But we were part of the trio. We called it the Cat Gang. And we received ones at District as well as in State. So yes. For orchestra, sorry. It was for orchestra.
Hello, I'm Austin Snell. I'm the choir director over at Washington High School. And I'm here with our student James, who participated in State Solo and Small Ensemble.
Hi, everyone. My name is James Hawkins and I go to Washington High School and I am a sophomore. And I got a one at solo State. And I participate in Washington Miss Chorus and Washington Chamber Singers.
Hi, my name is Teresa Edgar and I'm the orchestra director at Washington High School. And this year, the Washington Chamber Orchestra received a one at State Festival. And Maio Thuey received a one on violin solo. So I'll let them introduce themselves who are here. We are missing a couple of students. Deleon Rendell on cello. Sidney Roberts on viola. The Maria Kellogg on violin. And Sofia Lopez on violin.
Hi, my name is Sierra with Synat. I play the viola and I'm in ninth, or 10th grade.
Hi, my name is Miram Dehisus Sandoval. I'm a violin and I'm in ninth grade.
My name is Anaya Chappell. I'm a freshman and I play violin.
Hi, my name is Christian Young and I play viola. I'm in the ninth grade.
Hi, my name is Lisbeth Garcia and I'm a junior at Washington High School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maio Thuey and I got a solo on, solo ensemble for a one rating. And I also got a one rating with my orchestra group. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of our students and our staff and instructors.
Mr. Lopez, I'd just like to say, music is such an art. And it's good to see so many of our students engaged and involved, whether they are playing or singing. And so I'd just like to say congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Congratulations to all of you and to your families as well. Great job. We're so proud of you. Congratulations.
Mr. Lopez, can I just have one moment? So Sarai from Sumner Academy. Unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, there was an unfortunate event that took place at a few of our school buildings. And I just want to commend her for her citizenship. Her vehicle was one of the vehicles impacted by that event. And it could have been one of those things where she could have just put out a GoFundMe for herself. But she took it upon herself to not only put out a GoFundMe to support her fellow classmates, but the entire academy and those that were impacted. I've had the opportunity to meet this young lady and I truly just want to say, like, this is what we are here for. For our students to go out into the world and be good citizens. And so I just want to commend her for taking that step, taking that leap. She told me it's overwhelming. She didn't know it was gonna have this type of response. But she has, she is really someone that I am proud of and just wanted to commend her for what she's done.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, for making sure that you mentioned that tonight. Thank you. That's awesome. Next on our agenda, we'll invite Ms. Tammy Romstead as we recognize our All-State recognition of winter sport athletes. Ms. Romstead, good to see you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good evening, President Lopez, members of the board, and Dr. Stubblefield. We're here tonight to honor winter sports student athletes who represented our high schools by either competing in the state tournament or by being honored as an All-State selection. Before we start tonight, I want to thank all the parents that made the time to come tonight, the administrators, the coaches. I also want to make notice that we have a few students and parents can be here because we have games going on tonight. Alrighty, we're gonna start off with basketball. So for the All-State Selectioner Basketball, our first person is Junior Jason Rodriguez from Harmon. Six A All-State, third team. Supporting him tonight or joining him are Principal Jean Carter, Athletic Director Alma Hall, and Assistant Coach Jamarcus Dawn. Senior Lizelle Evans from Wyandotte. Six A All-State Honorable Mention. He's joined today by Principal Mary Stewart and Athletic Director Rufus Black. Senior Trayvon Foster from Washington High School. Five A All-State Honorable Mention. Trayvon is joined today by parents and Principal Cole Maya and Coach Josh Gray. He's in his third year. Lizelle, I think you have some parents here too. Did I miss them? Parents, we're glad you're here. Thank you. Girls Basketball, All-State Basketball Selection, Sophomore Malia Brown from Sumner. Five A All-State. She's joined tonight by family here in the room. Principal Rick Malone, A.D. Ty Collins, and Coach Michael Platt. He's in his third year. Along with, along with Malia Brown is Junior Jalane Hallz from Sumner. Five A All-State Honorable Mention. The next group we're gonna recognize are those that competed in the State Wrestling Tournament for Boys Wrestling. I've gotta work on this name. Senior Nadoma Gazaduke, Harmon. Six A Wrestling Tournament. Junior Juma Embryham, Harmon, Six A Wrestling Tournament. They're joined tonight by Principal Jean Carter, Athletic Director Alma Hall, and Head Coach, first year Matt Langhoffer. Sophomore CJ Anderson, Wyandotte. And Sophomore Franklin Van Bieber, Wyandotte. I'm senior, senior, senior. Sorry, Franklin. Both Franklin and Byron, CJ and Franklin have parents joining them tonight along with Principal Mary Stewart, A.D. Rufus Black, and Coach John Fields in his first year. Last but not least, Senior Byron Keith from Sumner. Five- Five A state wrestling tournament. Byron's joined tonight by his family and parents, along with principal Rick Malone, athletic director Ty Collins, and head coach Adam Beatty in his fifth year. Alright, now we get to the good stuff. Just kidding. Girls' state wrestling. Uh, senior Angelica Alliman from Harmon. Couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to recognize her. Freshman Kamani Jackson from Harmon, six A wrestling tournament. Kamani's joined tonight with some family that are here today, along with principal Jean Carter, athletic director Alma Hall, and head coach in his first year, Matt Langhoffer. Can we go ahead and shift down just a little bit more? So I can get about nine more. Go on, just kind of move. There we go. Okay. That'll work. Tonight, I also wanted to recognize a young man that couldn't be here. He is competing tonight. That sophomore Anthony Mendez from Sumner, five A state bowling. Alyssa Harris. Alyssa's a junior from Sumner, competing in the women's or the girls' all-state wrestling. Recognized tonight with, uh, parents as well as principal Rick Malone, AD Ty Collins, and head coach Adam Beatty. And the last one, it's a little different honor, but felt like we need to recognize. Come on up here, Leah. Let them all see you. Senior Aleah Netherlands from Schlegel was nominated for KESHA cover True Blue Student of the Week. KESHA True Blue Student of the Week honors student athletes throughout the state of Kansas who excel both on and off the court. Aleah is a salutarian of her class, three-sport athlete, and competes in vocal music in orchestra. And we're going to wish her the best. So like tomorrow, she competes the state in orchestra with her violin. Leah is joined today with some family, as well as principal Dr. Thompson, AD Sonia Scott, and her bowling coach, one of the many that she works with, Catherine Slocum. Alright, coaches and ADs, you can come off. Athletes stay for a picture. And very quickly, would all the parents stand up if you're not supporting these young athletes?
Congratulations to all of our student athletes, your parents, families, to your coaches, and again, to all of our staff. So proud of each of you. Thank you, Ms. Romstead, for presenting them. Um, and thank you to all your, your parents and coaches and students. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we will hear from Ms. Crystal Watson regarding our foundation scholarships. Good evening, Ms. Watson.
Good evening, Board of Education, the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and the Wyandotte County, the family and friends who are in the house. We are here to recognize the scholarship recipients for 2022 through the Foundation for Excellence. Let's give them one applause. Alright, it's time to wind it up. Alright, we had a total of 28 students who are receiving scholarships this year. We are so excited about that, and for the first time in the history of the foundation, we are giving away 12 $5,000 scholarships to us graduating seniors. We also received a number of family scholarships this year, and so I'm going to mention those for the sake of time. I am not going to go into the description of those scholarships. Um, they range from a thousand dollars up to two or $3,000, um, but we're also including them in today's presentation. So first up, we're recognizing Harmon High School. Vertia Espinoza is not here today, but she received the Machoki Scholarship. It's a $3,000 scholarship. And Sahala Rahim, Machoki Scholarship, $3,000. Is she here? Go right on up. Let everybody see you. And Janaya L. Webb, she received the Reasons to Believe. This is from McManany Van Cleveland Phillips, MVP Law, $1,200 scholarship. Also from Harmon High School, Ashley Gonzalez. She received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Lindsay Leon, Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. And Taylor McNeil, who could not be here tonight, she also received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Give them a round of applause, Harmon. Alright, next we got the Stallions in the house. Solaw Poit, got a Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Issa, and I'm not even going to try to say his name, his last name, but he also received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. He could not be here tonight. But who is here is Ruthao. She received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Alright, Sumner Academy of Arts and Sciences. Hamina of, uh, real, I said it wrong. Hamina Olieno. Did I say that right? Ariano. I wrote it down too, and I still said it wrong. Please give her a round of applause. Give her a double head clap. She received the Connie and Donald Marit Scholarship. And then Salvador Estrada, he could not be here tonight. He received the John Taylor Lewis Sumner Class of 1954 Scholarship. Give Sumner a round of applause. Now, don't y'all get tired now. We still got to keep going. Alright, Brianna Fields received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Daniel Maldelado, he received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. And Amaya Torres, also Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Alright, here come the Wildcats. Washington High School. Bun and received the Reasons to Believe Susan Bird Scholarship. Our Foundation for Excellence Scholarships, Goring Andrew. Give them a round of applause. May New, she received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. And Shamar Davis, Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Alright, last but not least, them Wyandotte Bulldogs. I'm a Wyandotte Bulldog. Did y'all know that? Alright, Louis Aguilera Fernandez received the Harvey L. Baker Scholarship. Carmisha Pocua received the Reasons to Believe MVP Law Scholarship. She couldn't be here. And we have Nikaila Berger. She received the Zack Family Scholarship. She could not be here tonight. Maria Duran Garcia also received the Zack Family Scholarship. Marco Martinez Reyes received the Zack Family Scholarship. And Naila Rosales received the Zack Family Scholarship. Rebecca Trenisifou received the Zack Family Scholarship. Did I get close? I got close, yes. Alright, Hamina Martinez Del Angel, I think I said that right, Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. She's not here. Y'all, Ari Lopez, she's here. Received the Foundation for Excellence. And Luna Marine Rodriguez also received the Foundation for Excellence Scholarship. Alright, y'all, gift like you at the Chiefs Stadium. Let's give her a applause. Alright, communication's going to take y'all picture. Just stand. Scoot in together. So while he's taking that picture, I want to remind everyone of the, uh, Foundation Annual Golf Tournament, June 15. Um, this is where we raise our funds to give back to our students through scholarships. So I hope you all will plan on participating, uh, the board, or you show up to volunteer, or you sponsor a team, or you just write a beautiful check. Any way you want to do it, I'll accept it. Um, but we're so excited about this year. Several of our board members were there last year. I hope they had a good enough time and are going to sign up again this year. But we have a great time. We've got wonderful sponsors. And again, congratulations to all our seniors. And guess what, you guys? I'm going to see y'all on June 15, so put it on your calendar so you can show up at the golf tournament. We'll give you more information through your college and career coordinators, okay? Alright, let's give them another round of applause. And then I also want to give a big shout out to their parents. Their parents are here tonight. So all the parents, raise your hand. Yes, stand up. Our college and career coordinators, if you're in the house, stand up, raise your hand. And our principals, raise your hand. It takes all of us to make this happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Crystal, and again, congratulations to our students and to your families and to our staff who helped you, uh, get to this point. So thank you and congratulations. You can feel the excitement and the energy from all of our families and students, so we're so excited for them, and we'll see you all on graduation night. Each of your respective schools. Best of luck to you. Okay, and as we jump back into our agenda, Ms. Smith, I'm going to jump us back to item number three. I'm going to jump us back to item number three on our consent agenda. We entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is item number four, an update from our Casey Kay Library. Would ask Ms. Levers to come forward as she presents her public library director's report. Ms. Levers, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Board, Dr. Stubblefield. I wish all the, uh, parents were here because it's important information that we could have shared for our summer reading. Nevertheless, um, we'll continue. We don't have any stats this month, but we thought that, um, we need to share with the board. We're busy, uh, with our summer reading programs, uh, and the theme for this year is Oceans of Possibilities. Uh, and, um, all our staff are visiting schools to hand out, uh, any, um, uh, reading logs uh, for, uh, summer. And, um, this year, they're going to, uh, encourage kids just to read 20 minutes a time and then fill those clocks, uh, on the right-hand side. So if you've read 100 minutes, you've earned a free book. If you've, uh, read 200 minutes, then you've earned another book. You, you, when you, uh, reach 300 minutes, you will earn a free book and a prize pack. And of course, um, uh, 400 minutes, so you've earned a book and then a grand, uh, prize entry. Your name will go into, uh, the, uh, grand prize entry. You've, uh, read 500 minutes, then you've earned a free book and the grand prize entry as well. And of course, uh, we encourage, um, students to read up to 600, well, not up to 600 minutes in order to receive all these, but it doesn't, uh, stay there. They can continue for every hundred books, uh, for every hundred minutes thereafter, they'll still get a free book. So we've decided that, uh, we will have our adult, uh, summer reading as well, and we encourage adults, uh, to read six books for, um, the summer. June and July activities for extra grand prize entries, of course, and we do have, uh, special programs uh, for, that will be available to groups, daycares, et cetera. And these are some of the, uh, grand prizes that we have available, and of course, the, the adults are on the right-hand side. Our kickoff party will be at the Boulevard Drive-In again this year, and I see some are getting excited, and I appreciate some board members that were there, and I, I look forward to, uh, see you there again this year. And our author this year is Daniel Mijares. And, uh, Daniel wrote the book Hope at Sea, and it just coincided with our theme, and he's, he's the one that we, uh, will feature. So, uh, every family that comes to the drive-in will receive a signed copy. Uh, of course, the gates open at 7:00 PM, and the new, uh, Shrek movie will be the movie of the evening. Uh, during that time, you know, before that, there's going to be games and we have, uh, a photo op for kids. Uh, it, it's going to be fun. So, um, just wanted to share with you, uh, the last time we've met, well, it's not the last time we met, but when we talked about the main, uh, public library project, you've asked us to go back and meet with, uh, the group, which we did. And, um, the group, um, just asked me to convey, uh, to the board, now that COVID safety protocols are no longer a threat, the prime opportunity to discuss and seek a forward approach is upon us. The committee is very proactive and inquisitive on the status of the project. So more importantly, seeking the prime opportunity to approach the board on the current status of the project and seeking a timeline to moving the project forward. So we wait on the board to give us a date where the, the group can address the board. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Levers. Any questions for Ms. Levers from the board? Hearing none. Um, I do think just regarding the library project, um, I think we'll have some conversation with you. I'm glad to hear that you were able to meet with, um, some of the committee members. Um, I think at the last, one of the last meetings, um, there were some board members who wanted to see, um, some concepts of, of, um, I forget which option it was, but remodel what that might look like, kind of the conceptual design of a remodel renovation, um, and then also the, um, if we wanted to build a new library, what would that look like and cost? So I think both of those were requested to, to get more additional information in terms of like a conceptual design and cost-wise and, um...
And, yes, and, and that was, uh, shared with them, and they said, you know, with all the questions that keeps on coming and I have to, I don't have all the answers, they requested to, you know, come and exactly what the board, uh, is looking for because they have to then now go back to the architects and get the conceptual, you know, design. So they want, instead of doing a few and come back, they were exactly, and, and just to address the board.
Thank you. Ms. Drew?
I, I have a question, and help me to understand. I may have forgotten. Uh, wasn't there a discussion about doing a fundraiser?
Uh, that's, that's part of it, to see where this is leading, what the, the board wants them to do, or which, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly what, you know.
Yeah, I think part of the conversation was, before we get... I think part of the conversation was, before we get to raising funds, we want to know what we're raising funds for and what that might look like. So I think that's why we put a pause on that piece of it, just so that we could have a conversation about what is it that the Board does want to move forward with? Nope, that's a great question because I know that had been floated out there. So that was my recollection. Ms. Page?
Yeah. And has there been a discussion with UG in terms of, there are certain buildings that they own? And I don't know what the point, I've seen some plans, but where's that money and what role will they play in this as well?
What will UG play in this?
Yeah.
We have not had discussion as to what UG will do or play, or how they will play because there's a new group, UG, I mean, we don't.
But some of the designs did include some things that included the UG. Now, I know there's a new government, new mayor and everything.
Right.
But has there been a discussion with them? Because it just makes sense. And who owns that UMB Bank? Because they were talking about selling it to us for a dollar. That was one thing that was put out a while back. So look, we need to make sure all parties involved know and what is the expectation and what's going on and where this funding is coming from.
And I think Mr. Lopez had a group here at the Central some, two weeks, three weeks ago? I can't remember.
It's been over a month ago, I believe, from some UG staff. And I think Dr. Stubblefield had put that in her weekly comments or update to the Board about the meeting that was had. And it was a very generic conversation of, these are some things that are, that the Board is discussing. But again, no decisions had been made. So I think just hearing this conversation, if I may, it, and I know the Board's had a lot on our plate and we're right in budget season, and so there's a lot going on. But I, but I do think we should carve out some very thoughtful and intentional time to have this conversation as a Board. Because we've gone back and forth and this has been ongoing for several years in terms of this conversation to answer some, some questions about who could be a partner, who could help, what do we want to look, what do we want this to look like as a Board, as a community? So dedicating some actual time to this conversation at a, whether it's at a future Board meeting or at a special Board meeting, I think would be appropriate since I don't know that we're gonna have, that we're prepared as a group to have that conversation today.
Isn't there a committee that has been set up to be able to address some of these issues?
I believe that's the community, are you talking about the community committee that?
With the library.
Ms. Levers met with?
Mm-hmm.
Right. I think there, there is that, that group. There's no Board Committee. So I just want to be clear, there's no Board Committee to do that.
Maybe that's what we need to do, is to get the Board to be a part of committees so that they can do some research and bring the collect, bring it back to us so that we can make a decision. It's just a suggestion.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Drew. Ms. Humphries?
Have we had the Community Committee do a presentation to us before?
No.
I would like to hear from the Community Committee. Since they were together, what, several years ago before COVID?
2019, yes.
And have representatives from that committee come and give us a report on what they see for the future of the library. I think it's very important we get the community input.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Ms. Russell?
Respectfully, I would just ask that we, it sounds like the committee has asked to meet with the Board. So I would say that it sounds about right that we would have a special meeting for this subject and the subject only. I don't want to spend a lot of time. I think the, we would like to see what a renovation looks like and we would like to see what that UMB build transition would look like and talk about costs and those things. I caution a meeting just because I, we don't have too much to talk about. Like, I don't see that the presentation that they would give would be any different than the presentation that was provided seven, eight months ago. But just wanting direction. And I, I believe the direction is get more firm numbers on what we're looking at now. I know that the, the cost of builds has gone up, but I don't want to waste their time. And I just don't want them to walk away feeling at that meeting that they still didn't get what they needed because I think we need the concrete information. And then we can move forward with partners and all of that piece. And then lastly, my only other piece of this would be the downtown projects that are going on. Making sure that we're also, whatever we do complements that because I don't want, I don't think the community wants that, the library to stand out as a sore thumb, which I think is also part of why this conversation continues to come back up to many groups, so.
Can, can I ask clarification? I've heard UMB mentioned several times. Was that a decision or was that just an option? Because is that like, or should it just be what a new location looks like? Like, I'm, I don't want, I mean, I think there may be other options. And then if we're saying a specific location, it may cause some additional challenges. So is it?
There's been different proposals. Dr. Nguyen and I were, when she was president, I was vice. We met with the former mayor who presented the idea of UMB Bank. Where's, we take ownership, it was for a dollar, and then some other plans that a company would come in.
But.
We, no, I'm just saying you asked. I was just trying to give you the background.
And I'm sorry.
That's where that came from.
I hate to interrupt, Ms. Page, I'm so sorry. I just, I would caution us on talking about specific land acquisition that may look like as that could impact any type of development. So I just want to make sure.
I understand that, but there were some proposals made. I'll just say it like that.
So I think.
We've had several different ones presented to us.
So I think what they're going to do is present two new proposals because all of those proposals that were presented previously, the, I mean, with the change in cost and those kind of things. So I think they're gonna present two options that are not tied, the renovation, obviously, in the location, but a new build, what it would cost minimumly, just depending on the location. Because if you start to talk about specific location, it has other, and I respect that that was the presentation at that time. But I don't even, we don't even know for sure if that option exists anymore. And we wouldn't want to say that that's what we are exploring at this time.
But can we make sure? Because I remember being on some of those early committees when they talked about the library. They never talked about costs. And as a taxpayer, people need to know, you know, what is this gonna entail? How does it affect me? Yes, we all want a library. It would be ideal, it would be beautiful, but we have to look at costs. We gotta look at inflation, some of the things that are going on now. And let's not be naive about it.
Right. So just to move us along, and I don't want to cut this conversation short. I don't think, again, the Board wasn't prepared to have a thorough conversation about this. And, but to provide some direction to Ms. Levers, I think there is appetite from the Board to know some additional information regarding the library. Again, renovation, remodel, however you want to look at that, through it, through that lens as an option and then building new as an additional option. So if the, if you could take that back to the committee to, to, again, I understand that they want to meet and present to the Board. I think as Ms. Russell said, we want to make sure that that conversation is meaningful and not just a waste of their time or that they walk away with the Board saying, we need more information. So if they could, I think that sounds like that's the direction of the Board, is to get that information in front of us. So if you could maybe take that back to them, I think those are the two, the two items that I think would be helpful. And again, just having, and we know it's your best estimate, right, in terms of cost? And I think you can work with whoever's helping with that to give you some numbers that may be realistic, knowing that things may change. But if you can get that information. So I think if you're, if you meet with the Community Committee, that would be the feedback, is if they can work on getting some of that information for us.
Okay. So just to clarify, do the Board want me to go back to the architects to give us a different amount? Because in, in the feasibility studies, that was there. I mean, they gave you three different numbers, you know?
I think that because it's been a few years, or at least a couple of years from that feasibility study.
And that's what we need to.
Getting some updated information from them in terms of what that costs. And they may be able to give you a more of a conceptual design rather than, in addition to that feasibility study, to give you the next step of what that may look like for both of those options. I would say that would be really helpful for us to be able to have that level of information.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levers. Yep, we will continue on. Unless there were additional questions about the report? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Levers. Continue.
In your packets, I've left you handout as well. This is just our strategic plan that our previous, or the one that we do have is expiring June 30. And staff was busy this past year, you know, getting a new strategic plan for 2022 through 2027. So this is just a first read, a hard copy for you to take. And then we'll bring the Strategic Committee to either the next Board or the following one for you to question, if you have any questions for them. And they'll, you know, what, they can answer that.
Sir, motion to accept as a first read, the 2022 through 2027 Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Strategic Plan as submitted by Ms. Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Levers.
Thank you.
Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Next up is Agenda Item Number Six, our Community Comment. Just a reminder, a Community Comment policy, please make sure if you are giving comment that you have checked in with our Board Clerk and that they have your contact information. When you approach the microphone, please state your name. And your time will start as soon as you begin speaking. You have three minutes to share. If you have any materials that you would like to share with the Board, you can leave those with Ms. Smith and she will make sure that the Board has, has that information. Again, anyone can give comment. Just please make sure you email the Board Clerk and request to be on the agenda by noon the Monday before the Board meeting. So our first comment would invite Ms. Jocelyn Strickland-Egans to come to the microphone.
Greetings to the Board and Dr. Stubblefield. My name is Jocelyn Strickland-Egans. Thank you for having me. It's with pleasure that I stand before you as an alumni from Benjamin Banneker Elementary School, Arrowhead Middle School, and Washington High School. I need you to know that after earning a bachelor's from Emporia State University and a master's from Kansas State University, my dream came true to come back to District 500 to teach. I've been with the district 33 years, all of my teaching career at Banneker. The reason I'm mentioning all this about myself is that I have an absolutely wonderful career. You can Google me later. And next year, Benjamin Banneker Elementary School turns 50. We will celebrate our 50th year in existence. I was five years old when I stepped into the doors of a brand-new innovative school. I was part of the first sixth-grade graduating class of students who attended from kindergarten through sixth grade. There was a contest to name the school, and one of my friends actually won, naming the school for an African-American scientist, astronomer, surveyor, and mathematician. Governors, the mayors, dignitaries from Washington, D.C., came to see the brand-new school. It was the first of its kind in the Midwest, a wave of the future for education. The balcony was suspended without columns, you could stand and look over the whole school. Banneker was open concept, allowing students and teachers to collaborate, promote student-centered learning, and learn through exploration. Open concept also developed team teaching. Teachers' workstations were surrounded with clear windows so that instructional planning was visible. All that was in 1972. The reason I provided a backdrop for this is that Benjamin Banneker Elementary School turns 50 in the fall. With the support of our administrators, Mr. Carl Unger and Mrs. Marika Roan, we will be celebrating with a parade, an evening program, a time capsule, and a souvenir booklet. This will take place in September. So we ask the Superintendent, the Board, and members of the community for their support and presence if possible. We already have community partners onboard as Banneker Elementary is a staple and a viable pillar in the Northeast area. Our theme will be, straight out of the 70s, this anniversary is an important part of our district's rich history and legacy. It will be a salute to the past as well as evolution of our school. Our school is our community and our community is our school. Thank you for letting me see you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations and thank you for the invitation.
Yes.
All right. Next on our agenda, I would invite Dr. Megan Cook. We have our Board Reports, our Head Start Program Governance, Overview, and Training. Dr. Cook, good evening.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Stubblefield. I'm gonna get my PowerPoint up. Can I just pull it up? Oh, you got it. All right. Okay. I'm here tonight to talk about program updates and some Head Start governance, which is a required training that I give you every year. So just a little bit to start with, some updates about our grant period. We have a five-year grant with annual updates to the Office of Head Start. We are currently in year four, which just started on April 1st and will end next March 31st. And then we will be starting year five after that. At the end of year five, we begin a new five-year cycle. So we just start new program goals and we start over with a new five-year cycle. Our current grant award is 4.8 million. We have 529 slots. 160 of those are full day, 339 are part day, and 30 slots go to Bonner Springs, which is our delegate. And our sites for Head Start are KCK-ECC and NCO-ECC. So Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center and North Central Office Early Childhood Center. Here are some adjustments and additions from our prior grant cycle to now. We have increased coaching and support of conscious discipline as a research-based approach to support social, emotional skills and family partnerships. We have been piloting FastBridge, which is an evidence-based assessment to monitor the growth and development of four-year-olds on the pathway to kindergarten. And we have an MOU with Kids Care to provide comprehensive dentals and physicals onsite to Head Start students. Here are the program goals with which we work through for our five-year cycle. Each year, we provide an update to these goals around where we have progressed since beginning them with year one. But the goals are to ensure Head Start students enter kindergarten on track with the necessary skills to be successful. We educate and increase families' knowledge of the importance of social, emotional development to become kindergarten-ready. Strengthen and support positive adult-to-child interactions. And increase community awareness of Head Start as a leader in early childhood education. We are, we also have five school readiness goals. Those goals are here and they are all aligned with the Kansas Early Learning Standards. And then at the end of each school year, we will show you our progress in each of our five school readiness goal areas. All right. So Head Start Program Governance comes from the Head Start Act of 2007, which describes the composition and roles and responsibilities of Head Start and Early Head Start. And it talks about the governing bodies and Policy Council. Governing body being the School Board for us because we are a school district. So the Act describes the expectations that regard program governance for Head Start. So this diagram shows you at the top in orange what the governing body or School Board shall be composed of. And because we're a School Board, we, if we cannot abide by how we are supposed to be composed according to Head Start, we just have to say that we're a School Board with elected officials so it doesn't always work out. a school board with elected officials, so it doesn't always work out to be exactly like this, but they understand that because we're a school district. Then we have a Policy Council, which is in green, so Policy Council is made up of elected, well, they are elected, they're parents of children who are currently enrolled in Head Start, and so you can see what the Policy Council has to be composed of, it can also be composed of community representatives, but parents have to be in the majority of our Policy Council, and then management staff, which includes for Head Start, the Executive Director, which is the Superintendent, Head Start Director, other management people you can see listed there. So that's what makes up Head Start Governance, and then the hierarchy of Head Start Governance starts at the bottom with the parent committee, which is at the site level, moving up to the Policy Council, which is at the program level, moving up to the Board of Education, which is at the grantee level. Governing body responsibilities are a legal responsibility for ensuring that grant activities respond to regulations, terms, and conditions of the grant, fiscal responsibility for ensuring that funds are used prudently and according to regulations, and responsibility to be engaged and knowledgeable about the program's five-year goals, progress towards achieving those goals, and outcomes for children, families, and the community. Here is what the Policy Council is responsible for, they're actually a unique aspect of Head Start Program Governance, because Head Start really supports active parent engagement in the design of the program, so that's why parents are part of the governance of Head Start, and parents actually make decisions for the program, which is unique to Head Our Policy Council is comprised of parent representatives from each Head Start site, as well as community partners such as DCF. These are the reports that I give to the board, so a lot of these reports, as you can see, are part of the monthly director's report that I send to you, we also send you a monthly financial report, we're part of the district audit, and then one time yearly, you would receive the annual self-assessment, the needs assessment, the program information report, and then when there, whoa, sorry about that, when there's communication from the Office of Head Start, that will be sent to you as well. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Just curious, how often do your parent committee meet?
Policy Council meets once a month, and it's currently our second, the second Wednesday of the month, so tomorrow, we meet at 12 o'clock, and right now, we're still meeting on Zoom, just because that's how we started this year, but we're looking to move back to in-person or a hybrid coming up. So after May, we take a little break for the summer, and then we start back up in August.
Okay, I just want to make sure, Policy Committee is different from the parent committee, or is it the same?
So it's a little bit different, so back to this slide, parent committee is at each site level, so it's like a group of parents at each school that kind of comes together, and then those committees then form the Policy Council, and how it's supposed to work is that what the parents are saying at the schools then goes up to Policy Council, and then Policy Council information flows back down to the schools.
Okay, and I was clear with the Policy Committee, or Policy Council, but those parent committee groups, how often do they meet? That's what I wanted to know.
They meet once a month as well.
Once a month, okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions for Dr. Cook? I have one easy question, I'm assuming you get the same emails that I do, I just, okay, so you don't need me to forward them, I just don't want to clutter your inbox, I know I send them to you every time I get one, so I will stop flooding your inbox.
Head Start loves to send the same email to several people, just so everybody's on the same page, so, yes.
Okay, I thought so, I just thought I would check, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cook, for the information. At this time, I would ask that we take a 10-minute recess, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Lopez, and in response to your request, I also replied in general that I am in support of adding such vans, because I too question the $10,000 enterprise rental, however, I am concerned, I have been for the last two years, that we have a large fleet of vehicles, and that for a district our size, Wichita has twice as many students, the largest city in the state, and has 44, that was, that number was presented to us as a number of vehicles in its fleet. So I would, I stand, again, clearly in support of your amendment, but on the condition that we also look at the total number of fleet vehicles in our fleet and seek to reduce the number.
So that is possible, I mean, to look at that, and I could get with the various departments to see like what that looks like across the, what our vehicles are used for, and what it looks like, if that's what the board would like to do. I honestly don't have a lot of background in that area, but we could look, we definitely can do that if that's, if the board wants to increase the number of vans for student transportation and decrease the number of vehicles that are in the other areas. One of the things that's in your budget folder document is a list of all of the vehicles that we currently have, so I can definitely, we can say that it's with that, and then come back and say, here's how we're gonna reduce them, because some of them may be up for bill that was for $10,000 was for, in fact, the transportation of students. And so to me, that stands out as an area, why are we giving dollars to someone else when we should probably just purchase more of our own if, also Miguel Martin had mentioned that there is an increase grow in the number of requests for those vans. And so, yes, I would just like to strongly, as I wrote in an email to you all, but also here today, prior to approving this, I would like to have a conversation or discussion about how we can address this moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And I see we've got staff ready to answer any questions. I guess maybe a little bit of direction. And so, Board, there's a request from Ms. Russell and to have conversation. And I know this Capital Improvement Plan is a living, breathing document, and it could be updated and amended at the Board's will. So there's a request to discuss and consider adding the purchase or the rotation of additional passenger, passenger vans. Would open it up for other questions or thoughts. Dr. Nguyen?
And thank you, Mr. Lopez. And in response to your request, I also replied in general that I am in support of adding such vans because I too question the $10,000 enterprise rental. However, I am concerned, I have been for the last two years, that we have a large fleet of vehicles and that, for disregard our size, Wichita has twice as many students, the largest city in the state, and has 44. That was, that number was presented to us as a number of vehicles in its fleet. So I would, I, I stand, again, clearly in support of your amendment, but on the condition that we also look at the total number of fleet vehicles in our fleet and seek to reduce the number.
So that is possible. I mean, to look at that, and I could get with the various departments to see, like, what that looks like across the, what our vehicles are used for and what it looks like, if that's what the Board would like to do. I honestly don't have a lot of background in that area, but we could look, we definitely can do that if that's, if the Board wants to increase the number of vans for student transportation and decrease the number of vehicles that are in the other areas. One of the things that's in your budget folder document is a list of all of the vehicles that we currently have. So I can definitely, we can say that it's with that and then come back and say, here's how we're gonna reduce them. Cause some of them may be up for, like, they're getting old, so we would have to replace them. But I would need to talk to the staff about where can we reduce to get to there and what does it look like over time.
And to answer that question directly, for the past two years, when I have made that request, most of the Board has not been willing to reduce. And when asking, and this I put in the email, so this is not a surprise, when you ask staff, they complain and, and claim, oh, they can't live without them. So I, I disagree with that. And so that's the historical background.
And I was just gonna add, I did look at that document. And based off of what I was told the vehicle, I struggled to find those vehicles in this document. And so I just also just wanna make sure that this is a complete list so that we know what we're looking at. As mentioned, it was a 2008 F-250. I don't know where it is on this document. And so, but I also see that a lot of these are buses. And so I'm also just, while I hear and want to support Dr. Nguyen's notion of reducing the fleet, I also just wanna make sure that it doesn't have a direct impact on students. There are a lot of maintenance vehicles, and I don't know what, what that looks like. And, you know, I don't wanna say, oh, we sell it and then we're renting those things in the same instance of what I'm talking about with the students. So just, if we can just confirm that this document in here is right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you, Ms. Russell. So I know Ms. Russell has asked the Board, or has put forth to the Board, a conversation about adding a potential, the way I'm looking at it, line around purchasing additional student transportation vans. Is that something that the Board would be interested in adding? I know there's a motion to approve the plan as is, but I think the request is to amend and at least look into.
What is the cost per van?
We have staff that might be able to answer that.
Don't scare me.
They're expensive. Cars are expensive.
They are.
We appreciate very much the discussion. And actually, we feel that the intent of putting together the plan was precisely that we could have this kind of discussion, that the community, as we, when we eventually approve it and then revise it and revise it, as any plan is, is done, that our stakeholders, people who see it on the website are aware, and they'll have suggestions. And, and that is all good because it's in the sunshine. And so, to the vans, and we support that, that was one of Mr., one of Miguel Martin's recommendations, and he currently has five of the nine passenger vans that are starting to get towards the end of their age, and maybe can go another year or so. So it depends how we slice it. And we're also, he'd like to have 10. To, five to replace the ones that are aging and, and five additional ones. Over time, Wayne has more information on what happens with the new ones precisely at this time where we find ourselves in already.
Well, currently, there's a nationwide shortage of vehicles that we can purchase and transport students. But KSDE has the limited, it might be even national limitation, that we can't transport students in 12 and 15 passenger vans. And the only company that makes a 10-passenger van is Ford. And they have stopped taking orders through the end of this year because of backlog. And so, you know, hopefully, we can get in and get orders. But vans, right now, are running about $43,000. Okay? We figure by the end of the year, when it comes time for us to order, probably add another 10% to that just because of inflation. So maybe $47,000, $48,000 like that. But I'm anticipating. But I've talked to Ford dealerships across the area. And they don't know when they're gonna reopen ordering. They're trying to get caught up. But hopefully, at the end of the year. That's my speculation, not Ford's. I've tried other dealer, other brands as well, but nobody makes a 10-passenger. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Page?
Okay, I have two questions. One, how often, we just rented those vans from Enterprise for $10,000? Is that something we do every year?
No, this was, this was the first time I've ever experienced. We, we rented it because we were having, the athletic director asked me to do it. We were having trouble getting athletes to practices and games. And so we rented it for six weeks. Rented the vans, too many vans, for six weeks and three days to get those students to their practice.
Okay. And then, second question, can you use SFR funds to buy vans? Just asking.
If it is related, if, why we're purchasing them, purchasing them are related to COVID or addressing things related to COVID, you could. But, so we would have to submit that to the state to say, here is why, and it would have to be related. Like, it had to meet those requirements, but it's basically if it, it is addressing that something that was created due to COVID. So technically, yes, it just would have to be related due to COVID.
Thank you.
And once we get to the point where we're ready to do it, I'd like to put it on, put it out for bid on our portal. That way, we have nationwide coverage. And we can get vans as they're available. Corporate fleets will even accept used. Corporate fleets, sometimes they sell their vans. If we can find those, low mileage, that'll give us broader strokes, better opportunities to get, get the vans.
Ms. Clark?
So I, I guess my question is, and I'm definitely not opposed to more vans, what I couldn't figure out is where the, where the number came from that was being proposed. So I'm hearing two numbers. I'm hearing one from a board member, and I'm hearing another from our, from Mr. Miguel. So trying to figure out where the number came from, that's where I struggled with saying, yes, this is right, or no, this is wrong, because we're not in the day-to-day.
Number meaning quantity of vans?
No, number, I'm hearing, I think I read maybe 14 or 15 from, in one of my readings. And then I'm hearing from Mr. Miguel, he's recommending 10. So that's a big dollar difference. And I need to, I'm trying to understand that recommendation.
So my recommendation was 11 because, two for each high school, and then one because they said that they use the vans for administrative purposes. So essentially, in my mind, it was two per each high school that we have. And then one, that would be that administrative van. That's not it, that's not saying that at one time, Yandau High School couldn't be using four of the vans. It was just, that was the simplest way. I did not communicate this part. I just was trying to understand the usage with Miguel. And so it's very interesting to me that my number was just one off from his. But that's where I had, that's where my thought had gone to with regards to the number that, of quantity that I think we need in our fleet to address concerns too.
Okay. My last question is, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to still wrap my head around, does that belong in this plan? Is that, does it belong in this plan, or where does that belong?
So the answer is it could. That's, we need the feedback of the full Board if this is something that we all want to pursue. Right now, the recommendation, there's, there's been some teamwork between transportation, finance, and purchasing on this. A lot of homework done. Our recommendation right now is to go with 10. But we would want to do five by the end of this year. Hopefully, we would have to really search for used, though, to get that done. And the search that Miguel has done on that ranges anywhere from $35,000 up to $70,000 with used car prices the way they are right now. The $70,000 range was somewhere around 20,000 miles. And you're up to the, around the 150,000-mile range if you go with the $35,000-cost ones. So that's why we're, we would be recommending start with five out of this year. And then we could add five additional ones to the Capital Improvement Plan for next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Nguyen.
So Ms., question for Ms. Russell, as well as staff. This is 10 or 11, new ones, additional ones?
Sorry, I should have clarified that. Our suggestion would be to purchase five additional, keeping the five older ones that we have first. And then in the second year, we would replace and dispose of or sell the older five. We would still have a total of 10 of the vans when we're done.
And just to clarify, we would be adding, so if.
Yeah, you're adding.
Be adding five additional. So it wouldn't be 15 altogether, it would just be five additional.
So I think we're, so there's been a motion and a second to approve the plan as presented. And great conversation about how we wanna move forward and including, and whether we want to include additional passenger vans. It sounds like there's still some homework that needs to be done, and it's, there's a shortage of. But it's not something that we couldn't potentially continue to investigate and bring back. I guess the question for the Board is, how do you want to move forward with this? Whether, you know, to Ms. Russell's point, do we want to add it to what's currently in the plan now? And approve that, or maybe as staff are bringing, researching and gathering information, costs, what that looks like, timing, they could provide some additional recommendation at a future Board meeting. I just wanna see where the Board's at in the process and how, how you'd like to move forward here.
I just had one clip.
Yeah, please.
Question of clarity. So the five that we would purchase this year, would it come from a different budget, and then you would incorporate those other five? So your recommendation is purchase five, and you'll bring that back to us whenever you have that number, and then incorporate just five into this?
Right. Now, the, the Capital Outlay Plan as presented here starts with next fiscal year. It doesn't include projects for this year because those POs are kind of already out there and in process. But yes, we are a little bit underspent compared to the average year so far this year in capital outlays. So I'm confident that we would have the funds, if the Board chooses, to move forward, at least with trying to collect some bids or look at purchasing used. With the used car prices the way they are and the shortage, that's why those that are on the market are higher priced than what we'd get if we waited until they were back in larger supply, though.
So then my question for Dr. Turan, falling in line with the recommendation of staff to potentially add the additional five, how, if it is the will of the Board, how would we move forward with this current plan? Do we make a, would someone need to make an amendment to this plan? Because I know there will be dollars that you have to move around. I don't really know what needs to happen in order.
What, Rach, Ms. Russell, one of the things that we can actually do is, because there are some other requests, so based what the Board decides tonight, we can make those adjustments and bring it back. And then you, you don't have to approve it tonight. Like, Greg, I don't know what the, okay. You don't have to approve it tonight. We can take all the feedback for the other requests as well, and then we can add them all and bring them to a future meeting for approval, so that you can actually see what it looks like and that sort of a thing. Cause, and I will yield, because I know there were some other Board requests, but then I got some information this morning, which I, I think will address some other requests. But I do have a, a request or suggestion that I will be asking the team to include and asking Board approval for as well. So, but I know there were some other requests that wanted to be added to this.
Yes, I saw security lights and camera, and I just needed a little bit of information. Are all of our buildings not secure with lights and cameras? Is that specifically at specific schools?
So I think Doug may be on. All of our buildings do have cameras and lights. Now enhancing them or relooking at it, if that needs to be done or adding more is one layer. I do know that we are, and it's for cameras internally in classrooms, that, that is a discussion that's happening now with the Camera Committee, which has teacher representation, Board Representation, and Administration. I believe those companies, Rashid, you can tell me if I'm wrong, like, so I do know there's discussion about adding more cameras in general. But as far as the outside cameras and those kind of things for security, I, if.
Doug's on.
Doug is on. He wants to.
Yeah, good night. Good evening, everybody. Honestly, I would actually defer somewhat to Rashid also. That is mostly handled by the audiovisual team, which is part of his department. But all of our schools do have the external. My assumption would be that they're looking at doing some upgrades. Some of those cameras, like a lot of our infrastructure is getting a little aged, so they need to be updated. I'm not really sure what other additional cameras, other than, as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, some of the ones internal in classrooms. If Rashid has anything to add?
So we are looking into adding classrooms, cameras in the classroom, but that discussion is taking place. All our buildings do have interior and exterior surveillance cameras right now. So, and we upgrade them constantly throughout the year.
My last question is, what's a library chiller?
The last time we had a discussion, we had had one of the librarians say boiler. And remember the conversation that no, there was no boiler existing. So that's a, a. Correction. And that I got the response from the librarian that they needed a chiller. I have no clue, but I assume it deals with either heating or air conditioning.
That would be part of the air conditioning system. You are correct. A chiller, and honestly, that's something I, again, would have to follow up with one of our foremen, the five-foot foreman, Steve Knight. We have not, again, noticed problems or excessive work orders with that. We will certainly, certainly take a look at that.
So the security lights was my suggestion, and it was exterior. It had nothing to do with interior.
Okay.
And I'm a little pissed because I think we had a couple emails from a couple of schools that there was neighborhood complaints that the parking lots were not well lit, and that either cars were gathering. I'd have to go back and really search the, the emails. But that was the comment, exterior.
I believe that one of those comments came from Central Middle School in that top parking lot area.
So hearing the conversation tonight and the questions and the additional information that's being gathered, I wonder if it wouldn't be smart of us to maybe hold off on approving the plan as presented and taking into consideration some of the information that's been brought forward to see whether it makes sense to add and, and change. Again, this document is something that can be continued to, to change and, and be amended by the Board as needed. So if we did approve it tonight, that wouldn't preclude us from making additional changes down the road if, if we wanted to. But I'm just hearing a lot of additional information, so just throwing that out there as well. Ms. Drew?
I think we need to go ahead and approve it. And if any changes need to be made later on, we can make it. But we need to close the door and finalize this for now, and just add in as we need to. Okay. It's my suggestion.
And if, if we could request to, we would like, if not an approval of the entire plan, at least the Board consensus on the vehicle issue, just so that we could get the bid process started on that with the timeline for spending by end of year quickly approaching.
Everything, everything. I'm suggesting everything be approved.
And I, I don't know. Can I make them, so can, I would be supportive of us moving forward with the approval. And then can I make an emotion for, I'll go back to other Board meeting to find the language around them accepting bids for?
So I have a clarification question and, and hold that thought, Ms. Russell. I think I know, well, just wanna make sure that we're in alignment, Brad, or the, the approval of the vehicles, are they in this current plan? Or would you need an additional motion to be able to do? Or would you need an additional motion to be able to do that piece of it?
She amended the, didn't you make an amendment?
So my understanding is, is that there are currently funds available in capital outlay that they could use for that.
Right.
However, they would need a motion from us, the board, in order to begin the bid process. And then they'll bring back the bid to us, whether it's a used or new vehicle. And then later on down the road, when they figure, when Ford figures out their thing, they'll bring us another amendment to this, to then use capital outlay
Okay.
To purchase new vehicles.
With the plan beginning next fiscal year, we don't necessarily need to have that in right now for this year. We can still do that with your approval.
Okay. So I know there's a motion and a second. I think it came from over here somewhere.
Wait a minute, did you vote on Ms. Russell's amendment?
I'll have to make a different motion.
That was on the floor. That was on the table.
Did you make a formal mo, okay. I just wanted to make, I didn't think she made a formal motion or amendment. I think she was just starting the, I thought she was just starting the conversation for the information. Okay. Okay, so there's a motion of, and a second to approve the plan as presented. So I'll ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call vote, please.
Did you get a second?
Yes, there was a motion and a second.
You have to have a discussion of that motion.
And that's, that's what we were just
Discussing?
Discuss, yes, Dr. Nguyen, we were discussing that motion and second.
Before we, before we vote though, Dr. Stubblefield mentioned also that she has some, so how does that come into play?
And, and, and I can bring it to a future. One of the items that's on there is, there was five million dollars in covered for a building acquisition. And I think it just, my, which we need to do a little more research. In just looking at all of our high schools at different levels, their athletic weight rooms and some of those facilities and some of the fine arts, performing arts component. I would want to explore improving those areas that have direct student use because some of them are not
Outdated.
Right. And then we saw all of our athletes here and they're at a huge disadvantage with other 5A and 6A schools that have access to equipment and weight rooms and those kind of things. So I would just want us to evaluate that and see what that looks like at all of our high schools. I do get lots of emails and things from parents and community members around that. But I'm not sure, I mean, I wasn't here historically of what the building acquisition was originally for. I'm not sure what, where the board is. But I would want to direct that money to improve in those things for our students in fine arts and athletics because a lot of that, at the, at the high school level, do create disadvantages for our students when they're competing with other 5A and 6A schools.
Does that include the PA systems?
Throughout the school or in the gymnasium?
In, in the schools, wherever they have programs, the science systems are horrible in some of them.
I mean, we can definitely explore all of those. I might be, I've not talked to anybody in facilities except for Dr. Turan right before this meeting, and I told him I was going to bring it up. But I think we can explore those things and see what's doable and have a plan to address that at all of the high schools.
One thing we might consider too with what we're asking for tonight. This is a capital improvement plan that's more about those consistent recurring things that we know, the smaller projects to medium sized projects that are going to come up. Some of these larger ideas are part of what would be more of a facilities master plan that might be larger projects over longer periods of time. So that could be something that we can put together and bring to you separately.
We're in a, we have some good problems. We've got great input. Our, we didn't spend as much as usual in the last, in this year. So we're in pretty good shape. We're kind of in a good position and lots of flexibility to on-ramp and off-ramp this on, based on improvement from, from all of you. And hopefully when the new website comes on and we can load this on also from other stakeholders. So we're in a good place.
So where's the upgrade to security cameras and lights?
I think, so I think
They're not in this current plan, so.
It's not, so what I, I think that we would have to explore where it is and then we can come back and say, here's what is, I don't think anyone that was on has like accurate information. Like if it's Central's upper lot, if it's at whatever school. I think we need to bring that information, like examine it and look at it and then bring that information back on where the updates are needed. I don't know if it's every location or certain location.
Okay, so we're voting on just as it is?
And then all of those other, with the exception of the amendment that will go with the vans after this, we will, can explore and bring information back about the other things that would bring, that were brought forth so people have accurate information and an estimate of what it would cost.
Okay, so clarification, is, Ms. Russell, your understanding, you're, they are buying five additional vans anyway, right?
That is my understa, under, so this, because this plan starts next year, they would buy five additional vans, new vans when they come available. But they will have to bring that back to us as an amendment once vans are available to purchase. The motion I'm going to make after this is, is that we accept as an informational bid, the purchase of
Five additional?
Yes.
So your First Amendment isn't necessary because they're already going to purchase five?
And so then that would just take us to ten. So the ask is that we have ten vans, so we would have ten vans after we buy the five.
So you don't have to amend the plan?
Well, then the plan will need to be amended. So over the course of the next
Of what we're voting on right now?
Yes.
The current includes five new vans?
No, the current
Okay.
It does not. The current, and just for clarity, so everyone knows what we're voting on. And so I'm making, I'm looking at Ms. Smith, so she's, she's giving me the eye over there. What we're voting on, the current motion is to approve the plan as presented, which is the capital improvement plan beginning with next fiscal year. And then, so that's what's on the table right now. The additional vans are, staff is looking to the board to see if that's something that we, we would like them to put out a bid to purchase the five passenger vans with this year's dollars. So that's outside of this plan. So just want to make sure we all are aware of what we're, what's on the table to vote now and what potentially I think is coming, so.
So, and if we vote to approve next year, we can bring back all of that information either like in August, like after the fiscal year with the security lights, like the information on, we, because that'll give us time to research security lights and the other things that would bring up, that were brought up so that people would have accurate information and be able to amend the plan that you approved tonight for next fiscal year.
I think we're all clear now, I hope. So now there's a motion, second, great discussion. So Ms. Smith, I would ask you to call, vote please, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
I'm going to vote yes, but I'm serious about having a serious discussion about reducing the number of, in the fleet. And if, and if it, I'll just say it like that. So I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. And on that note, I would just again ask staff to make sure that that, the information that we have on the vehicles, that it is as current as it can be. And then to Dr. Stubblefield's point, if you can look to, to make sure that the need and the potential impact, if we're looking at reducing vehicles, but making sure we have the correct list would be great. Thank you. So I, I just want to make sure before, yes, Ms. Russell?
Nope, go ahead.
I was just going to make sure before staff leave, Brad and Dr. Turan, with, it sounds like there was some consensus around putting out a bid for passenger vehicles. Do you need additional information from us or?
We were discussing actually at the side if we needed any kind of formal approval for that yet. And I don't think the answer to that is yes. I think what would be better is if we put it out to bid and then bring you a proposal for a final approval before we purchase, if that's
Okay.
Okay, without a
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the boundary concept hybrid item as submitted by Dr. Turan and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
You need a motion? So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one question. So this will go into effect next year. What is the engagement plan for those that are, is there a plan to talk this through with families that are impacted? How will this information be shared with them?
So if the board approves it tonight, we will, with those families at New Chelsea, Welborn and Colby Bruce that are directly impacted, we'll work with the principals to communicate with them directly about what that means and those specific students that it involves. So we'll work with communications and the principals to communicate with them directly about, you know, if it requires transportation or what, all of those things. And we'll do it starting as early as next week so that they know.
Dr. Nguyen?
And I would continue to ask us to consider using Parker as, as a way to meet the crowded situation at New Chelsea.
Any other thoughts or questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for everyone that was on that committee that did all the work to help us get to that point. Thank you to our board members who had great input on that. Next on our agenda is new business board. There's information there for us. This is for informational purposes only, but would, see if there's any questions from any board members or any additional comments from staff on this item. This will come back around to the board at a future board meeting as well for approval.
I have a que, is this at any other one of our high schools? So is, or is this the first school to take on this kind of endeavor?
Wayne is coming.
If any other schools have any capabilities like this. Harmon's the first I know that would want something this big to use for both, you know, family nights, educational purposes, you know, entertainment for the students during the lunch hour, things like that. So I'll check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, item number 10, policy review. Item A, recommended that the board accept as a second read proposed policy J C D B.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is recommended to accept as a second read proposed policy D D.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments, discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item under board discussion. First up is a recommendation and report from our naming committee. So I would ask Dr. Turan and our committee to present their recommendations and findings.
Thank you so much. President Lopez, Board of Education, Dr. Stubblefield. My role is to assist the board committee, the school naming committee comprised of Vice President Yolanda Clark. She chaired the committee, board member Rachel Russell and Dr. Stacy Jaeger, former board member, who is a member on the naming committee and assisted us. And all are available if you want to hear from them in any way. We outline a process for getting stakeholder input, for survey at each site. We had site meetings at both Fairfax Learning Center site and Arrowhead Middle School. We had board members in, at one of the meetings that was not specifically a member of the committee, but a board member, a lot of good, rich discussions and data. And board policy, FC naming of facilities, it, it's pretty specific at the conclusion of any naming of a facility or in this case, a school mascot or anything related to that, that the committee present its recommendation to the board briefly stated. And we have presented an attachment with that recommendation from your community, committee members. And I've checked with Mr. Goheen and he says our, our normal practice is then to have a period of time for public input and then that the action on the recommendation occur at a subsequent or later regular board meeting. So you have our recommendation and in writing as requested. And we'll entertain anything else you, you would like from us.
Thank you, Dr. Turan. Would open it up to the board for any questions or from our committee members. Ms. Russell?
I am, am, and I am speaking on behalf of the committee. I would just say thank you, Dr. Turan, for your amount of work and attention to detail in this process. You made it, you think you made it hard at one point, but you definitely made it super easy and just your understanding of the work that we had ahead of us. I just wanted to out loud say thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to say thank you on the behalf of the committee as well for all the effort and time that current board members have put in on this effort. This was a request from the community that came out a couple of years ago. So it was great to see that community really provided input that was needed for us to make these changes to these, to schools to make recommendations that would represent our community. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Turan, Yolanda and Rachel for just being there and listening to the community voice. It was really important for us to listen to the community and really strive to do what they want to do based upon what's voted. So I appreciate you guys working diligently as board members to ensure that this item did not get dropped from your agenda for this fiscal year.
Yeah, if I could just add on, I would echo the comments that have been made already. I do want to recognize that we do have staff members here with us as well. And so we appreciate, they made our lives easier. They had already spoken to their students. They knew what they wanted. They already had conducted some surveys. And so when we all walked in, they had a lot of stuff that was ready for us, some nice presentations. So very much appreciate the work that you did and already solidifying that you've already gotten the voices of our students. So appreciate that so much.
Great, thank you. Dr. Jaeger, great to see you. Is there a motion to accept the written recommendations of school naming committee on renaming Fairfax Learning Center and designating a new school mascot for Arrowhead Middle School as submitted on behalf of the school naming committee by Dr. Ralph Turan and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield?
Mr. Lopez, we would bring this back the next meeting because we need to have the community period from now until the 31st. So we don't want to accept it at this meeting. Sorry to interrupt you.
Nope, that's perfect. Thank you, Ms. Russell. So Janie, were you trying to move? Will you take that back?
Wait.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff and committee, and we appreciate all the work you've put into it.
Dr. Lopez?
Dr. Nguyen, I'm sorry.
You need to designate exactly how the public can provide input.
Yeah, great. So if there is any public input, we would ask you to contact our board clerk, Ms. Leslie Smith, and you can find her information on our website. You can contact her either via email and/or phone. I know her email is Leslie dot Smith at K C K P S dot org. And you can send your comments or feedback to Ms. Smith, and she will make sure that the committee receives that information. Ms. Smith, did I give you a wrong email address out? Okay. I apologize.
It's Leslie dot Smith at K C K P S dot org.
Okay. So, and you can find that on the website as well and her phone number. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Randy, before we go, a couple of people are asking online, what is the recommendations? Because some of them may not have seen it in Word docs, but the recommendation was to rename Fairfax Learning Center to Alfred Fairfax Academy and to rename or change the Arrowhead Middle School mascot to the Wolves.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. And again, if you do have, as if you have community input or comments, please send those to Ms. Leslie Smith. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be our, one of our amended items, an update on COVID in our district. So I would, I see Ms. Lewis is here with us. Not sure if she has some information she can share or from Dr. Stubblefield or before we open it, open it up to the floor.
You want to start, or you want me to start?
Oh, you can start. I mean, I'm assuming Ms. Page asked for an update. The COVID dashboard is updated weekly, and as the board adopted in a previous meeting that once a school which reached a threshold of 5%, they will be, they will go back to mask. We had one school that had several cases that was well above 5% before it was actually updated. So we made the decision today to send them back to mask, but it's updated weekly. And if it's over 5%, then they go back to mask. So I, the current dashboard has our most recent information from the last week. And based off of that, I think originally Lindbergh was in mask because there were, they were above 5%, but when they went to verify and check and some of the students who had symptoms, it actually wasn't COVID related, but so they dropped down below 5%. So I don't know the status of them right now. But Ms. Lewis can share what the current information is and then answer any questions that may exist.
So this is our current dashboard. It was updated as of Monday, May 9th, reflecting data for the week ending May 6th. With the caveat, this is not real time data. This is data that is put in by the staff as early as they can get it in. We had Lindbergh, which was a school that I went to, and they are showing at 1.4%. Once we cleared up and corrected what they have, the highest school being Stony Point South, but still not at 5%. And here's your data for your high school.
So I, okay.
I'm ready.
You, and if you want to go ahead and talk about Emmy Pearson, because on this, when we collected the data on Friday, Emmy, they weren't where they were. And then yesterday, once we got the information, based off some things that came through yesterday, instead of waiting until we updated next Monday, we had them to go back to mask starting tomorrow. We got the, all the information was like late yesterday evening.
That answered my question. I just wanted to know if we're making the 5% determination based on real time data or based on this, but that answered my question because I was a little confused of what I was seeing and what was.
Typically, it's that, but if we see like scenarios like we saw at Emmy Pearson, then we'll do it immediately instead of waiting the week.
Ms. Page?
Yeah. How many tracers do we have? Because I think that's an issue. I don't know if we have enough tracers. So how many do we have? I was under the impression it was one.
We have one tester and eight contact tracers.
And then what, so that parents can hear it more, because we got a lot of phone calls from parents from Emmy Pearson. What exactly is the protocol? What is the protocol? So that parents can hear it out loud, and it's not what I said or this person said. What is the protocol? So when a school gets to 5%, what happens? Who makes the call? Who decides what's going to happen?
When they get to 5%, they go to require mask until they drop below 5%.
Okay, so do, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, but do you, we voted on that if it gets to 5%, they would go back to mask. Do you make that decision immediately? Does it come back to us after the fact? What, what happens?
So what we have done, the, with the two schools that did go over 5%, the Health Service Department lets me know. We work with communications to work with the principals to go to mask. And then we inform you that this school is over 5%, they're going back to mask. Because if we had to bring it back to you all, it would be a true delay unless you were having several special board meetings. So they go to mask once, when we update the dashboard and they're over 5%. Emmy Pearson was a unique situation that we weren't going to wait until Monday when the data is, it ends on Friday and is updated on Monday. So Ms. Lewis and her team and those who are pulling data are watching those kinds of things that may spike. And in that case, when we look at it, we would have a school to go to mask sooner than the update if it were a case like that.
And then my other question, masks are optional. Do we still provide masks? In those schools that are going to go back to mask, do we provide masks for those kids or anyone who comes in that building?
Yes, ma'am. Today before I left, we put mask in all of the teachers' boxes. I will be at Emmy Pearson again tomorrow, making sure that the kiddos that are back are in mask. We had any visitor that came in today. We took the mask optional sign down because it is not mask optional right now. And I told the staff to leave it down until further notice.
Okay. Additional questions for Ms. Lewis?
I just want to wrap up the end of that process. So then, when it's updated this Friday, if it's below, then next week they get to go back to not wearing masks. Okay. So it's a weekly thing. It's not like day by day. Okay. Thank you.
But I guess my next question is, if we're doing it weekly in real time, can we do that? That turn around that quick? Are we able to do that?
We don't have the capacity. There are no like health agency or any, like people who have like, this is all they do. They don't even do daily updates. When we see something like we were seeing at Emmy Pearson, that's like a huge red flag. But to do the daily updates, because if somebody has symptoms and we code them, as Ms. Lewis said, as H S. And then if the test comes back negative and is not COVID, so you could have it at 5%, then it's confirmed, no, it's not COVID. Then it drops back down. So you, and then you may have people out waiting on a result. So that's why it's done on a weekly basis, similar to other health agency, the CDC and all of those, because we don't have the capacity to have accurate information on a daily basis.
And is it possible that when we meet, can we get an update? Just as we have with other things? Because, you know, heard from a lot of people and some, they were blaming us. And if we don't know, because I didn't find out until this morning, until we got the information, we want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do to protect everyone.
Yeah.
And it, I think we need to know.
So as soon as we had accurate information, we sent it to you. When parents or community members are calling you, they're sharing limited information that they have. So we send it to you, but absolutely if you want it as extended agenda item, the next meeting, because on the special board meetings, you wouldn't necessarily have it, will be May 31st. School or summer school wouldn't be in session. So I mean, that's a determination from the board. And summer school will be in session in June, but that's the pleasure of the board. We can provide an update on May 31st, but at that time, school wouldn't be in session.
But I think you provide a pretty good update every Friday. So I would just, that's on a weekly basis. And I know as, as issues come up, as with Emmy Pearson, or we did receive some communication. So I would just make sure that we're looking into that, and you do provide some, some information to us on a weekly basis with the team. So that's helpful.
I can just speak for me. I don't need another update, but I will say that we've received a lot of good feedback on making this decision. And so I know people are on opposite sides of the spectrum, but I did want to share that perspective as well.
And then I want to share, we received a lot of complaints that the, the parents had voted. It's over with. I know that. I'm just throwing that out. Who said they voted, they took a survey, and we didn't listen to them. So I'm just throwing that out.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments for Ms. Lewis? Thank you, Ms. Lewis, for coming up on short notice. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, and thank you for doing what you're doing to help keep our kiddos, continuing to keep our kiddos and staff safe. So thank you. Our next agenda item is an update on our budget. Board, please know that we're not doing a two-hour conversation on our budget today. It's really just to get an update. We do have a budget meeting this Friday, so I hope that's on your calendar as well. That will be via Zoom, but tonight is really just to lay some of the groundwork for this Friday's meeting and future meetings around our budget and potentially get some clarification from the board and direction from the board for staff and how we're approaching the conversation specifically for Friday. So I'll pass it on to Dr. Stubblefield, and I know there's some information, board, and you have a ton of information in your email and with the link that gets you all the needs assessments and department budgets, so.
I guess my request for the board for upcoming Friday, what we would be prepared to do, and we can get, I know there was a quest, request for the Kansas assessment data. Again, I'll remind everyone, we don't have the results from this school year, but we do have them from the 2021 school year. And because we've had transition in our data department, Dr. Campbell is working with the team to pull together a concise document by school so that you can see the levels of ones, threes, and fours. Some of the building assessments, building needs assessments had them directly linked there. We'll update them and work with the principals to add all of the data there. There are some links there. But I, our plan would be to start with the building needs assessments alphabetically to see what questions the board members may have, unless the board is given some other direction. And then we would go to the overall department budgets to see what questions and just chunk them. I don't have any idea how many we can do on Friday because we have not gone through that process. If there are other, like specific goals or priorities that the board would like to see within the budget, we could bring those scenarios forward at a future one. But I do think we are prepared to go through the building needs assessments because if there are things that board members would like to see added, we can definitely go back to the building principals and say, you know, this portion needs some more clarity and that sort of thing.
Thank you. So any, any thoughts or questions from board members as we approach Friday? Again, we'll be looking at needs assessments, department budgets, and starting alphabetically. But if there are other thoughts or conversations that need to happen, now would be a good time to, for us to discuss and give direction to our staff on how to approach that. Dr. Nguyen?
Yeah, I'll just say that that is a great plan and that is consistent with the outlines of the new legislation. And so thank you for that clarity. And then we'll proceed as we are required to by law. And the, the board, this year, the legislature revisited the requirements and put more restrictions on the, they called it budget certification. So I don't know if Mr. Goheen plans to be here on Friday, but if, it appears to be more effective if you hear the requirements from somebody other than myself. However, I'm at the table when the laws are made, so I know the legislative intent. And that this year, the, the main issue is that it's in public and it's documented. And thank you, Dr. Stubblefield.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Any additional comments or direction for staff?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, Ms. Page?
Some of the needs assessments, could they provide more information? Sometimes it doesn't look like they provided enough. And if, I just think we need a little more information. And then from what I'm hearing about the legislature, they want more information. These are the people who are dealing our funds, and we got to make sure they understand what we need. So I thought in some cases, some people did a pretty good job. And then others is, you know, if the kids aren't doing as well, it's hard to believe you just need this much. So something's missing, that they need a little bit more detail.
So I think when we go through each one, those ones that are missing, that's feedback I can take back to that principal. I will say that in some cases where the kids aren't doing as well, when you look at what's already been allocated and the fact that we, they weren't in school for almost a year, they don't have, they haven't had the time to implement with all of the supports that they have in place. Like our lowest performing schools have the most support, so they may not be asking for more. They are probably, I mean, they are working with Dr. Campbell and her team and others to make sure that what they're doing is implemented with fidelity. So they may not be asking for more because they haven't had a chance to implement what they've already received.
But wouldn't they, wouldn't it make sense, even if they're not asking, to note that we're doing this, this, this? This is being funded by this and that. So they'll see that something is being done. They wouldn't just look at it and assume, oh, they didn't ask for much. And I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying, is it a sin to put that down, that we're doing this and that and that? They've done that. So we'll see.
And when we look at it, the ones that are missing, we can definitely go back and ask them for that. Yeah.
Okay.
And if, and I would just say, it might help us move the conversation on Friday as well. If you, if there are some specific needs assessments that you're referring to, Ms. Page, or any board member that you see, hey, I'd like some more information, let Dr. Stubblefield know prior to Friday, and that might help us identify that and help us with the conversation. So if you do, I know it's a lot of information, but if there are specific ones.
It's a matter of writing the school.
Right. So I, if there are specific ones that you, that you see, please let Dr. Stubblefield know. That'd be great. Additional que, Ms. Russell?
This might just be the newbie in me. But when it says SS, does that mean 27 students in a third grade class? Is that what that needs assessment asks means?
I would have to, because SS could be social studies or SS. So I would need to look at like it within.
So there's a few abbreviations within this document. First, I want to say thank you, though, because this is very helpful for me, and I found it very helpful earlier this week when I was looking at it. But I think like on Hazel Grove, for instance, it says no TS requested. What does that mean to me?
No TS?
Mm-hmm.
I would have to pull it up, but I'll make sure.
Those types of things I, will just help me move forward.
Okay. And I, that's helpful feedback, because then we can have a little key of what those.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. No, I think, even being a newbie, I think some of us would still say, what is that? So, no. Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions? Okay. Just a reminder, the meeting is this Friday, the 13th, at, Ms. Smith, 2 o'clock? 3 o'clock? Thank you. So please make sure that's on your calendar, and that is via Zoom. So you should have, or you will receive a Zoom link if you haven't already. All right. Moving along with our agenda, next up, our executive sessions. Assuming staff can be released for.
Staff, you're free to go with the exception of Ms. Devon, so that she can be a part of the negotiations, conversation.
Would entertain a motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer, employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, going in at 7:24, 10 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back in open session. Entertained motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act, going in at 7:34 for 10 minutes, coming back out at 7:44.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Hold on just a second. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back in open session again, board. Just a reminder, Friday's special meeting at 3:00 PM via Zoom. You should have that information coming to you if you don't already. And I failed to mention at the beginning, I hope everyone was able to celebrate their mothers this past weekend. It is Mother's Day in Mexico today, so happy Mother's Day to everyone and enjoy the rest of your week. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session. Motion to return to open session.